We'll call this February 5th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
All present.
At this time, all that would like to please rise for the invocation given tonight by Councilman Henry and then stand for the Pledge of Allegiance as well.
Let's pray together, shall we? Heavenly Father, we love you and we thank you for your great love for us. Thank you for this wonderful community that we're the beneficiary of and just lead us as we help us to be good stewards of it, make good decisions in the good people that we serve. We do ask these things now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have any changes?
Yeah, we already had roll call. We need to add item 7M.
All right.
Consider Resolution R 150202 authorizing the mayor to apply to the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development for community development block grant funds. Sponsor is Melinda Kiefer.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, under old business, A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on January 15th, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
5B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O 150101 amending the Cookeville Municipal Code Title 14, Chapter 7 and 8 relative stormwater management and repair in buffer zones. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, as we stated the first reading, this major change to these ordinances of the repaired zone, which will now apply to all streams and ponds and wetlands. Instead of our standard 50 feet we had before, it now depends on the drainage area, which will either be 30 or 60 feet. Also developments greater than an acre disturbed will now have to retain the first one inch of stormwater runoff. Also stormwater management facilities will have to do a little more bookkeeping and keeping up with how they do their maintenance on the facilities. We've had no comments since the last reading and I would recommend your approval.
Okay, so we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I have one, I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Sure? It's okay. I'm sorry, I went at the work session, Greg, so I wasn't able to ask you this, but I was kind of, actually I had the chance to read all this, or not read all of it. I read, Cruz through it a little bit. Lot of stuff here that your office has required. Do you think that you might have to hire additional, an additional employee, employees, maybe half-time FTE or anything in order to institute this?
Not at this time, though, we don't anticipate that.
Okay. All right, great.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Here under new business, 7A, consider on first reading ordinance O 150202 to amend the Cookeville Municipal Code Title 12, Chapter 8, Section 12-801, Energy Conservation Code. Mr. Littrell.
Mayor and city council, back in June of 2014, we adopted the 2012 codes, international codes. Along with that was the 2012 Energy Code. We did this in order to stay in compliance with the Tennessee Code annotated 68120101. We also set a start date of January 1st, 2015. That'd give people time to adjust to the code and, you know, adjust to new code and prepare for any changes. As the January start date was approaching, we had questions about the residential code, but nothing out of the ordinary when we were switching to the code. However, we started taking a look at the 2012 Energy Code focusing primarily on the residential side. Then about a month ago, I had a meeting with an industrial prospect concerning various building fire codes pertaining to the construction of their building. They were talking about their manufacturing process and clients and other facilities they own in different states. During the course of the conversation, the 2012 Energy Code became a topic. The architect and the owner proceeded to talk about the concerns in using this code in Cookeville. They completed a similar building in another state using the 2012 Energy Code. New requirements added about a 30% increase in cost and by meeting the requirements of the Energy Code, they were actually using more energy. It's a total contradiction to what the Energy Code is supposed to do. Since the building plans were substantially complete, we were able to allow them use the 2006 codes for their project because that's what it was being designed under. We started taking another look at the 2012 Energy Code and it appears the intended energy savings are not there in some instances. Biggest reason I've found is that the 2012 commercial Energy Code doesn't differentiate between a office building, a warehouse, a shopping center, or a factory. So if you have a factory with the crucibles in it, which you have a lot of heat buildup, you have to use more energy to try to take care of it, you know, air conditioning or whatever within that building instead of exhaust into outside. So it's my recommendation tonight that we replace the 2012 Energy Code with the 2009 Energy Code.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion among the council.
I think this is very good that you had the flexibility when to see that there was a problem that could arise and this is about economic development in this situation for you to go back and do 09 instead of the 12, and that still keeps us in compliance with the state, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think it's important, too, that the other areas around us have this and it certainly would be an economic disadvantage if we didn't drop this back just for building purposes, right?
Especially in the commercial and industrial side of it, sure.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Sound like we have an early arrival for the hog rally out. They may have the dates wrong. 7C, or 7B, excuse me, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance O 150204 amending the budgets of the General Fund, Drug Fund, and Economic Development Fund of the City of Cookeville for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance will amend, as you mentioned, the budgets for the General Fund, Drug Fund, and Economic Development Fund. We do have some additional revenue to go ahead and recognize. Total additional revenue right now that we're projecting is $1,023,000. Couple of the bigger items within that additional revenue, State, the hall, state income tax, we have additional $70,000 there. Building permits, $147,000. Plans review fees of $68,000. Our sales tax are up quite a bit so far this year and we're recognizing additional $350,000 right now, and I think it could be even more by the time we get to June 30th. Sell of the land, which was the old, or the police substation on Jefferson, that's $350,000, and then grant revenue of $25,000, and insurance recovery of $13,000 from a damaged vehicle. We do also have some additional expenditures to go ahead and recognize, building maintenance General government and personnel costs $115,000, and police personnel costs $27,000. This budget amendment will also go ahead and set things up in case Project UNO does move forward. There's $1,250,000 that would be transferred from the General Fund over to our Economic Development Fund, which is where we have, the Economic Development Fund is where we handled all the industrial recruitment process so far, so it would transfer that money to the Economic Development Fund. Claims and damages, $60,000. ICAT grant expenditures, $25,000, and we have the grant revenues to offset those expenditures. Going ahead and budgeting funds, $45,000 for the needs assessment for the new police station, as well as $12,000 for a police department vehicle, which was purchased with those insurance recoveries that I mentioned earlier, that $13,000. In the drug fund, we have $91,000 in additional revenue. That's from confiscated and seized drug monies and property that the courts have awarded to the police department, so additional $91,000 so far this fiscal year. And going ahead and budgeting expenditures for those funds of a total of $87,800, and that would purchase some additional items for the dispatch communications room, a multipurpose vehicle for the police department, as well as another Dodge Charger that they would purchase out of the drug fund. Body cameras as well for the police department. So total of $87,800 is what's planned in additional expenditures with those funds. And as I mentioned earlier, the transfer from the General Fund as far as economic development, the transfer from the General Fund into economic development of $1,250, and the potential check that we would write to for industrial recruitment to Project UNO. So that's $1,250, and I'd recommend approval.
Very good. This is a public hearing portion of this, so do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this, any of these items? Okay, seeing none, we will then entertain a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion among the council?
I'm assuming, Mike, that it, and we hope that this is not the case, but if UNO doesn't move for some reason, that that money just stays in economic development, or does it go back to General Fund or what?
If UNO, UNO does not move forward, that money will go, stay in the General Fund. We will move it if we see Project UNO moving forward, and if it doesn't, then we won't make that transfer to economic development.
How much, what is our budget? What's in the economic development? How much money typically? Before the $1,205?
Before the $1,205, right now, as far as a fund balance for that fund, it's about $450,000 or so in that fund.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7C, consider Resolution R 150201 authorizing participation in the TML Risk Management Pool Driver's Grant Loss Control Matching Grant Program. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, this resolution will provide authorization for the city to participate in a driver's safety grant program offered by the Tennessee Municipal League's Risk Management Pool. While this is a matching grant program, the project for which funding is sought covers 100% of the cost of motor vehicle record checks for employees that drive city-owned vehicles. Conditions of employment in Chapter 4, Section 8 of our policy manual addresses driver's license requirements for employees and indicates that periodic review of employees' drivers' records be conducted to assure adherence to that policy. The pool also recommends this action be taken and suggests that liability exposure may be reduced by completing these checks. This grant will provide funding for the city to conduct motor vehicle records checks on employees that drive our vehicles at no cost to the city. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, but I would respectfully request your approval.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
This is, I'm glad whoever found this is doing this. This just makes common sense. We don't want to have exposure if somebody doesn't have a driver's license or has had a bad driving record, driving a city vehicle and open the liability. We would be open for that. Very good.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
7D, set a date for a public hearing on ordinance O 150203 amendments to the official street map, and that will be March 5th, 2015. Item 7E, consider approval of engineering services contract for master grading plan at Highlands Business Park. Melinda Kiefer.
Thank you, mayor and council. We're requesting approval of the engineering contract with Reagan Smith Engineers. This particular contract is reflective of our grant award from the TBA Invest Prep Program. That program was put together by TBA to help communities handle what you might call gap items and making sure that all sites for development are ready to be fully marketed. We submitted several items in the plan. On the next slide, you'll see we asked for new GIS, aerial things to be done. We've got that taken care of. We also will be putting up signage on all 13 sites out at the business park. Our monument sign is just about ready to get started as well. And part of the thing that we had requested and they also awarded was a master grading plan per site for the Highlands Business Park. And what that does, it is a highest impact, lowest cost ability to grade each of the sites so that we're able to give a developer, potential prospect, just a snapshot of what site costs might be for their structure, facility to locate there. So we sent out a request for proposal. We received seven back. We used our matrix and committee approach to selecting engineer, and Reagan Smith was the high scorer. This is a 70%, 30% grant, and as I showed there, Putnam County has partnered with us as co-owner of the business park with 15% of that 30% match. So it's been a great, it's a win-win for all of us. TBA is a great partner, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Ms. Kiefer, this is part of our economic development because a lot of these people that look at Cookeville and sites, they do it on the computer.
Yes, sir.
So this is another tool for us not to be eliminated, that they can do a site evaluation without physically having to be here then.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. Melinda, as I was going through this, again, reading this, one of the things that kind of caught my, caught my attention, just a quick question about that, because I may be completely wrong about this, but they, this reevaluation of the sites and grading and potential for potential suitors can be, can be altered, I guess, in order to make sites either smaller or bigger?
Right.
In order to, so we're not, we're not, is that, is that the case, that we're not locked into a certain size lot for each, you know, for this segment that has this many sized lots? They even mentioned we can even, depending on, depending on suitors or vendors that would come in, come in here, we can add maybe even six more sites to the park? Is that, is that correct?
Again, that is possible. What we're going to base this on is TBA's conceptual development plan, which has identified those 13. When we put out our scope of work and met with the company, the engineering company, we did say to them, if you see from a site development standpoint that moving that conceptual site boundary line this way or that way, north or west, makes more sense to make two 10-foot, I mean 10-acre lots as opposed to 120 simply because you can, then please make us aware of that information and we'll consider it in the scope of the grading plans they go. So yes, it is all very conceptual. Those lines are very movable, and again, we're going for the lowest cost, highest impact.
Sounds great.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
7F, consider approval to purchase digital, ally digital video body worn cameras and docking stations, sole source. Sponsor Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, ask you to consider approval for purchase of body worn cameras. As you can see here, these cameras are the digital ally brands, the same, same camera that we currently on, we bought last year. As a matter of fact, we've had those, that particular brand in service since about 2007. We intend on buying 35 additional units, and what we're able to do with those 35 units is actually give every officer, sworn, uniformed officer, a body worn camera. The price per unit is $735 for a total cost of $25,725. Because we will have extra cameras, we do have a need to buy an additional docking station, which is $2,900. Freight, $225. The good news is that $19,710 is from a GHSO grant. That's 100% grant that we already had. We asked for a grant modification for those monies, to move those over to make that purchase. And then the additional $9,140 would be from the drug fund, and for a total cost of $28,850, and I would request your approval.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Chief Evans?
Sir.
Is there any way you would know, are we going to be one of the first departments in the state to have body camera?
No, I think there has been a lot of, lot of departments across the nation that have body worn cameras.
And here in the state of Tennessee?
I know there are other, I know Sparta had had a different version, a much less advanced version that they, that they've used for several years, and I know Martin, Tennessee, used a different version. We're probably one of the first, if not the first, to integrate the body worn camera and in-car camera all into one package.
Oh, that's good.
In fact, as I was telling Councilman Womack earlier, there's three technicians over there now just trying to help us make sure we put all those pieces together to make sure it's all working. So, so I think we're probably the first in the state to do that, for sure.
That's, that's good.
I have a question. So, Chief Evans, that integrated system actually gives, gives you basically more eyes at whatever that scene may be. You've got eyes from the officer, we've got digital eyes from the officer, digital eyes from the car, the vehicle.
Yes, correct. And a backup camera on every police vehicle that we have as well, so.
That's great.
Any other?
As a practical matter, elaborate on a couple of ways that this would be, you know, this would add, add to what, you know, add to the policeman out there on the force and what they're doing, how they do it. What, a couple of scenarios where these would be very, very valuable. And will all officers have these?
All uniformed officers answering calls for service.
Okay.
So officers that may be doing administrative duties. We will have four or five of those extra in the cradle, so if an officer was to have the need to go out and do an investigation or, or something, then they, they could pick one of those and take it with it. But what it really does for us is, of course, in-car cameras, and I think we've all seen some of the footage, either some of ours or something on the internet. And what the body worn camera does is, is, is once you leave that vehicle, if you go behind that house, or in that house, or in that business, you know, now that camera goes with you. So you're not just capturing audio, and sometimes you would get out of range, but there's been a lot of situations where the officer would get out of range of that camera and you would actually even lose audio. So with this body worn camera, then all of that technology goes with you, and we're able to capture more data, more evidence, and it's a real safety feature for our officers.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7G, consider authorizing city manager enter into contract for the spatial needs assessment, site selection, and analysis, master planning of the proposed police department. Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, as you know, we've been working through this contract with Architectural Design Group out of Florida for some weeks now, and I think we've reached an agreement. I think during the work session, all of you got an opportunity to see that final product. We would, I would ask you to authorize the city manager into this contract with ADG, who's partnered with AEI, which is our local, one of our local architectural firms. The scope of the services that they'll perform is obviously the detailed spatial needs assessment, which is $22,480. The site analysis, master planning, which is $16,820, and then reimbursable expenses of $2,500. We did put a clause in there that they would not exceed $5,200, but anything over $2,500 would have to be approved by the city. The maximum cost would be $44,500, and that includes the $5,200 maximum cost for expenses reimbursement. And I would request your approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
7H, consider authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement for natural gas service with Middle Tennessee Natural Gas Utility District. Jeff Mills.
The Cookeville Gas Department is proposing to enter into an agreement with Middle Tennessee Natural Gas Utility District to have gas delivered directly from them at our Double Springs Meter Station location. This has been a delivery point which we have had Middle Tennessee deliver gas to our system for pressure and volume supplements during our system's various needs for many years. But during that time, we've had to have our marketers purchase the gas, and then they transfer it to Middle Tennessee, and then we pay Middle Tennessee the transportation fees involved. With this agreement, a gas rate will be established for us as their customer to purchase the gas directly from Middle Tennessee Natural Gas. This purchased amount will also, will also not be accrued against our contractual agreement with our transmission pipeline, thus allowing us more purchasing capacity. This agreement will give us more deliverable flexibility and set the path for the larger interconnect point, which we intend to partner with Middle Tennessee Natural Gas on for our future industrial and system growth, and I recommend your approval and entering into this agreement.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7I, consider authorizing city manager sign a new engagement letter with Bill Penny of Burn and Foreman. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into a engagement letter with Bill Penny. Bill Penny has represented our department since about 19, or since about 2000 on permit appeals and litigation from our wastewater treatment plant. Bill has changed firms. He used to be with Stites and Harbison. He's now with the firm of Burn and Foreman, and so a new engagement letter is needed, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7J, consider awarding bids for sewer cleaning jet, rotor, vacuum water truck, and dump truck. Mr. Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have taken bids on a new water vector truck, and have opened bids. Bids are, the low bidder was Sandsome Equipment, $264,938, and we would recommend that bid. Do you want me to do the next, collectively, do the next one also?
Sure.
And the dump truck bid, we've opened bids on the dump truck. Landmark International was the low bidder, $81,925. Both of these were bidded, are budgeted items in our budget and are under what we've budgeted, and recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Kelly, on this first vehicle, is it a replacement or an addition to?
It is a replacement. We have two currently. We have one that's used every day. It is a 19, let's see what year is it? It's a 2007, so it's going to drop back into the one that's our backup, is a 1993. It'll go back into surplus and be bid out on Gov. deals. The one we currently use, we'll use as the backup, and this will be our everyday unit. These things are used every day.
What does it do?
High-pressure cleaning out wastewater lines. It's got a vac, a vacuum device on it, keep people from having to get in manholes to clean out debris and so forth. You can take pump station wet wells, grit and so forth that gets in. We used to hire, y'all may be familiar with Barky Beaver, not Barky Beaver, Greasy Beaver, the guy that had the big truck like that around here. He's not in business anymore. So if we've had to do that, we've had to contract that out. This will give us that ability to do that.
It does something you don't want to do.
Yeah.
Very good.
It's a viable tool if you're in the sewer business.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7K, consider accepting retirement letter from city manager Jim Shipley. Mr. Shipley, would you like to read your letter to the?
Sure. "To the Board of Mayor and City Council, please accept this letter as official notification that I am retiring from my employment with the City of Cookeville, effective on March 6th, 2015. I have truly enjoyed my 31-year career working for the citizens of my hometown. I've had the opportunity to work with many excellent city councilmen, and I've actually served under 10 councils. Seems like more than that. I'm especially proud of the professional staff and our city employees that are all dedicated to provide quality service to this community every day. Many people have asked me why I've decided to retire. I want everybody to know that I'm under no pressure to step down. It's just time for new leadership, someone with fresh ideas and new vision, somebody who's not so old. I love our community. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. It's been awesome to be a small part of what's happened here over the last 30 years. And thank you so much to all the city councilman employees that have supported me and my time with the City of Cookeville. Sincerely. Please accept my letter of retirement."
Very good. Now, do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
A motion is second. I'll start this off. Certainly you say in your letter you've had a small part. I think you've had a very large part. I think that's evidenced by the 20-plus year, 19 years, almost 20 in this job, but the 31 total that you've done, and certainly appreciate what you've done. what you've done and what you've meant to this city and the things that's been brought forward and under your leadership.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
I'm thinking about a couple of weeks ago when the Furball, sponsored by the Friends of the Animals organization here, Celebrate the New Animal Shelter, was conducted, we had a good time. By the way, this, so you folks should know, you all were well represented on the dance floor by Councilman Woodford and city manager Shipley and myself, but none of us were in the same league as Gail Fowler, though. But at the end of the event, to a rousing, enthusiastic standing ovation, city manager Jim Shipley was called to the front of the room and given, as I said, a standing ovation and they talked about his vision and his help and assistance and his leadership in the development of the new animal shelter. And that's just one of many things, his footprint will be in this community for a long, long time. And by the way, I just thought about this, Jim, they presented Jim with a plaque and it said, from the Friends of the Animals, and it said, Jim Big Dog Shipley. So from now until March 6, I would appreciate your joining me, I can invite you, when you refer to Jim, talk to him, call him Big Dog, okay, we do that. Jim, we're going to miss you, buddy. Good job.
Thank you. That moniker's probably going to stick for a long time.
I'd like to express my regret at having to accept his letter of resignation, not resignation, but I've got a count on my Hotmail account from all the letters that we received from, I've got it labeled Jim and Gail, you know, that I've started out a long time ago in 1998 and I've just continued it to the present time with all these emails and stuff that we've got and it's with a lot of fondness and remembrance that I'm glad you're staying around here in this place that you've helped create. It's a little bubble of civility and nice place to live and retire and raise a family and I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
And Jim, I'm sorry, I got to say something, I got to say something too, but this won't be long, believe it or not. The thing, and of course, we're going to have plenty of time to do this at a later date, okay? This is just, this is just the beginning, Jim, so, but the thing I appreciate most in your letter, which I think really sums up, sums up your many years of services that you wrote in here, I love, I love our community and I wouldn't want to live anywhere else.
It's true.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. I was going to say something briefly, I'm going to say most of my remarks for later on, but I want to thank you for your service, being a quiet leader with a vision, you've been an anchor for the city. Thank you for your dedication and your love for the community. I think every one of us up here love our community. You've done it much, much longer than us up here right now, but thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
And we'll, there will be a reception on March 6 from 4:00 to 6:00 PM to honor Jim and whether permitting, that will be at the Dogwood Park Performance Pavilion. If there is inclement weather that day, the decision will be made, obviously, that day, but it will then move inside here in the council chambers. So notate that on your calendar and there'll be a lot more information and communication about that at a later time. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 7L, consider authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to appoint Mike Davidson as interim city manager effective March 6, 2015. And I will make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. There is the agreement that Mike, that has been drafted, that Mike would serve in an interim capacity as the search is underway for Jim's replacement. He will conduct, continue to conduct his current job as finance director, as well as adding the duties as interim city manager. The search is being facilitated by M-TAS, which is Municipal Technical Advisory Service. We interviewed several firms, or we talked through several firms and we decided to go with M-TAS because it was, they've done several searches inside the state of Tennessee, they're very well qualified, so that process has begun, but we're thankful to Mike Davidson for agreeing to step up and serve in this interim role during that process and provide a very smooth transition as we move forward. So I do have, make that as a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And the additional item of 7M, consider resolution R150, oh, I'm sorry, let's do that. Sorry about that. Item 7M, consider resolution R150202, authorizing the mayor to apply to the Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development for Community Development Block Grant Funds. Melinda Kiefer?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're requesting approval for application to the Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development, CDBG program for housing rehabilitation. As you can see up on the screen, this maximum grant award will be $525,000 is what is the maximum amount. There's no local match required. This program is federal monies that flow through to the state. It can be, there's sewer rehab projects you can do with CDBG, many, lots of different things. But this particular grant focus works on low to moderate income minority housing, disabled and elderly. If we are awarded the money, the monies will be utilized to make improvements to eligible housing in the West End neighborhood area, which has already been identified and considerable efforts have been made by Habitat for Humanity for that area. The eligible homes must be homeowner occupied. Currently, there are 19 owner occupied homes in that neighborhood and we could do a maximum of 10 homes under this program. The homes need to be in serious disrepair and in a way that needs to bring them up to codes and standards. Ones that are in serious disrepair beyond just being rehabbed can be demolished and rebuilt. The Upcromon Development District is graciously partnering and facilitating this grant program. They will prepare the application, they will also, all the necessary documents as well as administer the grant funds in this program. Tammy Odell, community planner with Upcromon Development District is here tonight. If you have any questions for her, I know she will try her best to answer them and we respectfully request your approval for application.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Linda or Tammy, help me understand, are we, with these homes, these additional, are we partnering with Habitat on these or is this an addition or what Habitat's doing?
I think what this will do is collaborate and enhance what their efforts are. I do know they've had conversations with them, I think they want to make sure that whatever happens with our grant award on this does align with what already has been done in the past and then Habitat has some future plans out there as well. So there will be alignment, project alignment with these monies.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
How does, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you were.
Go right ahead, sir.
Does this segue in with the Habitat for Humanity? How does the, how does a grant work? I know, I know the Habitat for Humanity, of course, builds the homes, but is this kind of like the Habitat for Humanity builds the homes, but if the, if the homes come in disrepair, is that how they, is that how that works or?
Potentially, I guess a Habitat homeowner could apply to and benefit from this program, but currently Habitat is working on a new neighborhood area in the West End area. And so to make sure that, that the entire neighborhood, you know, is elevated as new homes are being built, help homes that are in disrepair also raise that standard for housing as well. So I guess to be more clear, there will be parallel goals between the way these grant monies are expended and Habitat's vision for their project work, past and future in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
This time, are there any citizens that would like to speak before the council on any matter not covered already during the meeting? All right. Oh, yes. If you will, just identify yourself and you have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Deborah Sam and first I want to say thank you to every staff member and Mr. Shipley and official here for your service to our city and I never take for granted the opportunity to speak. I'm grateful to live in a state that values public engagement on issues, governance and the use of public funds and debt issuance. I'm heartened to hear the mayor talk so much about fiscal responsibility and transparency lately, for I was concerned when I read in the paper that the city was asked to consider tax increment financing at a December 11, 2014 meeting with CHM LLC for their joint venture development, Browning Development. As I have not heard further about it and there seems to have been no movement yet towards creating a TIF district, because all that is a very public process, I wanted to proactively ask the city to be very, very careful on our behalf when it comes to using public funds, TIF or otherwise, to subsidize the ability for large corporations and smaller private for-profit businesses to make money. Even with public projects, there are risks with TIFs because sometimes, often, things don't turn out as hoped for, for a number of reasons, including national or local economic downturns and TIFs can actually exasperate that problem for communities. As the mayor said on social the other day, it is important to, quote, "ask questions" to, quote, "verify that public money is being properly spent," unquote. I will take this opportunity to do so. Why is a developer still pursuing building something they can either not borrow enough for or do not want to take on such a large debt for? Why was December the first time they brought up incentives when they had already been working on this for months? Plus, it is not up to the developer to lead this process. A TIF district needs to be in place first before someone can apply for a TIF and if it turns out that we are now considering different forms of subsidy to them, our community should still lead in deciding which ones. Additionally, the spirit behind TIFs is the but-for test and to me, a for-profit development for retailers that only wants to be on two self-selected adjoining parcels of land does not pass it. If someone wants our dollars badly enough, eventually they'll come, even if to a different location in town. And if not them, then someone else's desirable will come. If we are truly, if we truly are that attractive a market that can sustain an additional $1,208 per year spent by every man, woman and child, not dog, in the county, then the retailers will come. If they're really going to, if they're really going for the trade area, then it doesn't make sense that there's, there's only one spot possible and maybe a compromise needs to be made. That and flexibility might indicate that they are really mostly expecting business from the city, in which case, the number jumps up to $2,856 per person per year. Does that sound realistic for an economically depressed area? The article also reported on the estimated amount of sales tax not collected because people shopped elsewhere, online or Mount Juliet Nashville area. However, even at the developers' projected numbers, along with no decrease in the current local spending, this project only makes a 2.5 to 2.6% ding in that number. What does the opportunity cost for subsidizing? Does it affect our ability to borrow money for a public need? What do we lose in property tax not waiting for unsubsidized retail development?
If you could, please wrap up in about 10 seconds.
Can I please continue? I've spent weeks on this. I have that much more.
Okay.
Thank you. Additionally, how does helping two out-of-town developers and some retailers make money while effectively paying off their debt with their city and county property tax obligation affect an already strained relationship with our local and small businesses who have been and continue to manage any debt they take on and pay property tax? This is like a slap in the face to them. 10 years ago, the chairman of Academy Sports and Outdoors spoke out against TIF for retailers. He said of his competitor, "This is not a nonprofit, not a library, not a school." Clearly, that founding family proved their business acumen in building a successful business with a great exit strategy. Perhaps he has some wisdom for us. Furthermore, the rest of us will be paying with the same tax base for additional infrastructure needs due to increased volume of traffic, among other things. If, as a developer said, "The various retailers have been patient," our city can show patience and self-knowledge, too. Also, while not the same brand of retailers, we have all the slated categories of retailers in town already, most of which are truly local and not big box or chain stores. And the new stores won't be of such a higher class or carry such different things than existing retailers because they still need to serve this market and what we want to and are willing to buy. Finally, it does seem odd to encourage a struggling economy to buy, to spend more money. The people with money are likely looking outside of town because they enjoy the experience and/or are looking for quality, high-end luxury or specialty items and none of that is going to change with these stores or the anticipated wave of stores to follow. If we as a community are not ready to attract these retailers yet, then we are not ready. If we don't have the topography, then we don't have the topography. We live where we live and we need to honor that. Why are we trying to be something else? What happened to Cookeville Proud? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sam. Anyone else I would like to welcome? I think we have two Boy Scouts. What's your all's names?
I'm Ben Riches and this is my brother Cory Riches.
Very nice. Welcome to our meeting. Are you coming for a badge?
Yeah, we're getting citizenship in the community.
Very good. We welcome you. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, meaning we'll be adjourned.